Committee and we're having a meeting to discuss our budget. We're dealing with the fire, uh, fire bureau budget first and Chief Douglasson, welcome. And we're gonna open up pages, oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Uh, Councilman Scrinches out on military leave, Councilman Livingston.
Present.
Councilwoman Crox.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Patra.
Present.
Councilman Mottso is absent.
Present.
That's two missing Mottso and Scrinches.
Felt like you were waiting for them to call in. So we'll open on pages fifty-eight through sixty-two and one ninety-seven. Do you want to start any questions? Chief, do you wanna, before we ask any questions, you wanna make any statements on any particular items that, uh, might be significantly different than last year's?
Uh, none, I, I tried to, when I was looking for us to cut, I tried to cut every word that I could cut.
Can you tell us where you did cut?
Wait, let's pick up a minute if we could, Chris.
Yeah.
The Assistant Fire Chief.
Yes.
It's vacant. Are you, you anticipate filling it, Chief?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilman, it was filled yesterday.
Oh, it was, okay, okay.
Yeah, Captain Tim DeHul, which is former to Assistant Chief.
Good, okay.
Yes. We had to do that to move our process, also hiring five new firefighters.
I believe all of his vacant positions will be taken care of by the end of October, October fifteenth.
Yep, hundred seventeen we have budget for, uh, we will, all hundred seventeen will be filled.
Good, okay.
And it takes care of the other issue that we've had is the overtime issue.
All right.
Overtime, we have to come down here, although by having a full staff, the overtime numbers.
Does the overtime reflect it in this budget? Do you have less overtime?
So overtime is the exact same as last year.
No, we've been short firefighters, we've been short people like military leave or something. We've had a variety of different issues and hopefully by filling all these positions, it's gonna take care of the overtime to what it has been in the past. Assuming nobody gets hurt, we don't have people upset. He's had multiple, I mean, Chief.
Well, he's doubled what the budget was, so.
Yes, but he's, he's had many, he's had a lot of different issues of people being out sick.
Injured on the job, injured off the job.
Those, those issues have really just disappeared and, I mean, ones that, though.
Not those issues, I had, uh, three military, uh...
Right, we, are they back or are they gonna be back?
They are back, they were deployed from January until September. Just having three individuals, uh, deployed, not having those three individuals, there was an overtime cost of like two hundred thousand dollars associated just with those three recent firefighters failing their positions with overtime. So, uh, one or two, you know, a few individuals make a big difference. I have, uh, an individual who'd been off for a year and a half, I have cancer, uh, we fill in his position with overtime.
And how would he?
We have to go into exactly the same, the same personnel ladder.
Uh, I have several firefighters who've been injured off the job, I have, uh, who are using their own sick tags, month, three months here. Have to tell everybody bodies, fill their position. I have a couple injured on the job, one that's coming up on two years, has been injured.
Yeah.
And you can see it, we're three people, for eight months, equal two hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a time limit where someone is injured before they go on first on, uh, medical leave or, or is it what's a quality?
Disability, yes, the, uh, it's corporation counts of, actually.
Yeah, how, how long the time period is, you said it's two years, how much longer do they have to be?
It's coming up at two years, two years is the time, if you're doing a different, uh, if you're doing a different job for two, if you're doing a certain job for two years, that's considered your job. So we don't have, wanna have firefighter, we're paying to be a firefighter, they come, they're gonna adjust it out for two years, now by according to the state, that's their official job now, so.
They're exceptions under two oh seven, they also have civil service exceptions, so if you're out on leave for ordinary disability and that leave is continuous for a period of one year or more, the city may move to terminate you after a hearing, everyone's entitled to a pre-deparation hearing. Um, but usually, particularly when we have members of our fire department who serve us, who are ill, you know, our hope is that they return, so we don't generally keep them on a, you know, on a ticking time.
They're clearly injured, that's what I'm saying. Uh, not, don't like this, uh, firefighter that's generally ill, but if they're, they're injured, work-related, and they're off for a year or two, instead of filling them in with overtime, do they go on, was it two oh seven eight or something like that where, uh, you can actually put a firefighter in their place?
Yes, yes, yeah.
What's the time, what's the time of, before you can do that?
Generally, the time limit before is kind of an awkward phrasing of it, um, if a person has worked for two years, the city is in good faith to make application that that person should be on permanent disability retirement, uh, which is different. Um, often we try and do that in, um, and I'll speak, not as a fire, but to all of our departments that are subject to two oh seven, um, with the agreements of the employee. Most of our employees who are injured for a long period of time, who have to undergo multiple surgeries, want a possibility of return, and they don't wanna be considered permanently disabled or retired. Generally, it's the chief's correct, it's about it to you, however.
Well, overtime is always an issue.
Yes.
For these firefighters.
Yeah, I totally understand.
Do we have money in the contingency to reduce the numbers?
No, I think the numbers are, I mean, we're, considering what he's talking about, uh, that he expects it to be lower, so.
Yes, it has significantly lowered in the weeks since the military people have started, come back, yeah, come back.
On page sixty, uh, the professional services line, um, I'm curious to know why we're, uh, why we, uh, ended up going so, uh, far over the original estimate of four five thousand, um, and why we're going back to it, because it looks like we went over in twenty eighteen as well.
Okay.
I believe that's what we used for this study, right?
No, the professional ser, and with the professional services, we, I don't know if we went in there for the study, but the professional services is what we pay our ambulance billing company, it comes out of our budget. So the ambulance billing company depends on how much money we generate, if we generate a million dollars in, like, transporting people to the hospital, we pay them like six percent and it comes out of our budget. So if I, if this figure is, is, is low, it's a huge win for the city, that means we're bringing in a lot more money than, than we anticipated and we have to pay them more. But by this figure being bigger is a huge plus for the city, that just means we brought in more money on our ambulance transports, so it's cost us our six percent, is a little bit more to pay them. So, I may be paying five, six extra thousand dollars here, but we brought in another hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just making sure with this.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Anything you need to hit the mark with that.
Chuck, um, you sort of alluded to something that, you know, you weren't sure about, maybe?
The overtime.
About, that was the overtime?
No, I, I didn't know all the details that I knew, Chief.
Okay.
I couldn't rattle it out, I knew it was an issue on future, I didn't know all the issues.
Okay.
Hey, um, we have a gym, do we have a gym available?
We have a gym in our, uh...
Is it? Is there any chance that they're taking like yoga or lobbies or something that might help prevent injuries?
That would be a good thing, the city is sponsored.
That would be nice.
It would be, sometimes you get into issues where, if they get hurt doing that.
Yeah, or if, if they're, if they're in health, before it's something, then that's a wellness to us.
I agree totally, we look at wellness things all the time.
Yeah. Well, maybe we didn't, I'm, I'm looking at that. Hey, I used to teach Tai Chi, what do you want?
Danny, the problem that we had, uh, you know, these things, we give a lot of suggestions to the local department, but teaching yoga and somebody gets hurt and we have some liability issues, you know, and, uh, the department doesn't have a lot of, we give.
I'm, and, I'm not gonna like heavy turn up to the bus because I don't think we were asked about whether or not our firefighters, through the course of their gym, should get a yoga class. I think we were asked whether or not, um, we could be hosting yoga class for City Hall employees, which I think is a different matter.
Well, something, I think something should be done, because, I mean, if, if you're all stretched and, you know, able to bend and put your, the, what they wear is very heavy.
Being physical fit is a huge part right there, is a huge part.
Exactly, exactly, and stretching is a very big part, because if you're not stretched, you're gonna get hurt, I've seen so many injuries at the gym from that.
I disagree with you.
It stretches the budget while you're in it.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, our, our department definitely pooh-poohed the, let's incentivize employees to like take city-sponsored, like, walks during the day for liability reasons. Like, we don't want people signing up to do city-sponsored walks and like injure their ankle and all of a sudden they're covered by comp.
Well, can't they get a deduction or something, if they could get a deduction in insurance, that'd be something. A lot of the times the insurance companies, they can get.
Danny, we talked to unions about it, it's a lot easier.
I know.
All right, we wanna get chief fire. Chief, one question for you on the, we ordered a new fire truck a while ago, didn't we?
Yes.
What's that due to come in?
It was just ordered, it takes about, it takes about an entire year.
Okay, a year, yeah.
It's just, uh, we have new med cars coming and new, I'm very thankful for everything we're getting, we're getting new med cars, we're getting a new fire engine, uh, we just were awarded a grant, which I thank you, you supported us for the last three years. We, we applied for the same grant three years in a row for new radios, and we just recently got it, uh, so it's a, it's a huge plus and it'll be a cost saving for the city, new radios and, uh, batteries. Thank you for the love.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve page fifty-eight through sixty-two and page one ninety-seven.
Second.
All in favor of approving the pages fifty-eight through sixty-two and one ninety-seven?
We, uh, both motion was one to the page fifty-two.
One eighty-seven.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
One eighty-seven.
Yeah, we didn't even open one eighty-seven, I thought.
Uh, he did, but I didn't look at it either.
It's one eighty-seven.
Yeah, that's.
President Gallen, for the purpose of the record, can you just restate your motion, please?
Make a motion to accept page fifty-eight through sixty-two and page one ninety-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, uh, no votes, so passes unanimously.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
So, uh, Mr. Shager.
So you, you guys need to reopen pages one eighty-seven and one eighty-eight now that you've approved everything out of there and, uh, seal approval.
I'll make a motion, uh, sorry, Chris, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, for make a motion to, uh, to open one ninety-seven and one ninety-eight?
Second.
And Chuck, what are we gonna do here?
We just have to approve a whole lot of them.
Make a motion to approve pages one ninety-seven and one ninety-eight.
Second. Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any against, seen none, passes unanimously. Is that satisfactory, Chuck?
Yeah.
Second?
Uh, it's not.
Question that you guys requested last night was, what would happen if we took the thirty-six, what's in contingency?
Yeah.
Okay.
What, what's the total now contingency, including what you already had?
It's gonna be thirty-six thousand plus twenty-five, and that's up to...
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one dollars.
And I did this one.
Controller?
He does high math, not a very good person.
Come on.
So.
Pre-remicus.
To give you an idea, if we took the thirty-six thousand out of there, okay, I think it was thirty-six thousand twenty-nine one. Thirty-six thousand twenty-nine dollars, the residential tax rate would go from a three point oh five two decrease to a three point one six decrease, basically. Uh, the commercial would go from point two seven nine to point three nine.
Let's take around the thirty-six.
We need, we need the twenty-five.
And what is it if we take the whole sixty-one?
Well, I think you wanna leave one.
There's something there, right?
I think you do need something.
Yeah, you want something.
In being honest, I have twenty-five thousand is a lot of money for contingency and I haven't really pushed for more because I know what occurs in City Hall that people just don't spend money, let me say this. I think in, it's been past experience that people would spend money if they had enough in their budget, okay, that's not the mentality I'm saying it, because of council today, is that you don't go here and you don't cut every hundred dollars, okay? They know that we can work with them, both the council and the departments to get what they need, okay? And my first year, everyone was looking at a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars, okay? The department has, we just go spend every dime they have, okay?
It never, it doesn't happen anymore.
That does not happen anymore, okay? And I think I've been the middle man of that to the department heads, don't go spending money if you don't need something, just don't, you know, you got two thousand dollars in furniture account, don't go buy two thousand dollars worth of furniture, that doesn't happen. How did you accomplish that, that like culture shift? Mostly by talking to them, saying, I was at Tegu County, that's the way it works, okay? We try to switch it there, this one with the mayor, if somebody needs something, we try to find a way to get them what they need, just don't go out and waste things.
This, this council is very accommodating and understanding and I think it's worked with us and, and not had a lot of those requests, but it wasn't always like that.
Yeah, it, it works for the departments, it works for, the big winners out of this whole thing are the residents, okay? There's not crap being spent that doesn't need to be spent. And I think that's an important aspect of having everybody working as a team to get these budgets in line and get people what they need to do their jobs.
Most of my passion will tell you that department heads used to come down, ready to cut things out of their budget and inflate certain, certain lines.
And then cut it themselves.
We don't like that.
No, and then, we beat the heck out of them before they come down here.
That was, I mean, that was like a figure.
You would call a doggy.
We, we have, we have a little war room that everyone goes through and, um... We understand what they're doing to try to find solutions for it.
So, so if they have an expenditure that they need and they don't have the money, we always help them find it.
Until they would come down.
And they're very gracious to approve the transfers that we brought down, so they can do what they need to do.
And they would cut the twenty-five thousand, well, you know what, look at this, I can cut twenty-five thousand dollars off that, uh, that's for, yeah, I can cut, so then a seven percent increase in, in, uh, in taxes would come down to maybe a four percent increase. And, uh, make it sound like, you know, you did something and it was all, you know, like a dog in front of you. But anyway, it's not that way anymore and everything is working out for the best.
I think ultimately the residents are the winners.
And they just want another point, what, one, one percent?
He's serious.
We, we still have to go on.
So what, what's the number, thirty-six thousand what?
Thirty-six thousand twenty-nine dollars.
You don't wanna just leave the twenty-nine in there and cut the thirty-six thousand?
There's twenty-five in there, that's what we, this is.
You say just the twenty-nine.
Just brings, brings it down back to twenty-five thousand.
And twenty-nine dollars.
What do you feel about having twenty thousand, right?
What if something happens?
Yeah, I, I would support.
What's that, what's that normal contingency balance, usually we've been, can you remember the last couple of years?
Twenty-five thousand.
It's twenty-five, Nick? Yeah, I'd, I'd like to leave that there and then, yeah, just in case something happens.
Well, I'll make a motion to transfer thirty-six thousand dollars and thirty, thirty-six thousand twenty-nine dollars from the contingency line to lower the residential and commercial taxes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
See, the line, the line, the, for your records, it came a decrease here.
What page are you on?
We didn't open the page.
What, yeah, open page forty-six.
Forty-five, ten?
Forty-six. Thank you.
Right down in the back up here, open the page.
Open the page, we're just saying open the page.
The page.
Page, I'm looking. So on page forty-six, you're gonna open page forty-six and page... And page seven, those are the two pages you're gonna open.
Do we have to amend page forty-six to reflect the additional thirty-six thousand dollars?
It's done that as you've gone along, everyone, you cut something, it's where it went to.
So right now, the page forty-six has that, or twenty-five thousand plus thirty-six or twenty-nine, yeah? No, this is... That's not.
Plus five thousand minus four hundred, minus thirty-five.
But that's a number that they use, not this. Right, but no, when I did this, I knew this isn't that.
We're watching the magic happen, folks.
Pretty funny.
Is this the magic or the sausage?
Sausage.
God, they're not the same.
It's far less gruesome than I thought.
I will say the bad rule that they were saying earlier, um, we, as department heads, we can budget more conservatively, we don't need a rainy day fund because we know if there's some special project comes up for some expense, they are gonna help us find money for it, so, so you can budget more accurately.
Okay, so what we got right now, on page thirty-six, the line nineteen ten point five five zero 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 contingency account has a total of sixty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars in.
Give me page forty-six.
Forty-six, yes.
Forty-six.
Can you repeat that, Chuck?
Line A nineteen ninety point five five zero zero zero, that twenty-five thousand is now sixty-three thousand two nineteen, okay? You're gonna reduce that back down, so what you're saying, you want to do like twenty, twenty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand two nineteen to bring it back to twenty-five.
Thirty-eight thousand.
That changes your number, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Oh, you just know you already have.
I was looking at the wrong.
It changes my motion.
Okay, good, good.
It does.
And then on page seven, you're gonna reduce A four one zero zero one... By that same amount, thirty-eight thousand two nineteen.
So wait, we're gonna add or reduce?
Reduce thirty-four thousand two seventy-nine five eight two by thirty-eight.
Thirty-four million?
Yeah, by thirty-eight thousand. Two nineteen. Right. And new number will be thirty-four million... Two forty-one... Three sixty-three point five seven.
Okay.
So we, um, all right, can you restate your motion on page forty-six, please?
Yes. I make a motion on page forty-six to decrease a contingency account line from sixty-three thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars to twenty-five thousand, that's by thirty-eight thousand and two, uh, thirty-eight thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, and transfer, and then on page seven, and then the real property taxes line, and decrease that by the same thirty-eight thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, bringing that to thirty-four million two hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
So can we get two votes for that, just two motions? One is an amendment to page forty-six?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Close?
We're through twice.
And then, um, you're going to vote on page seven with the first by Connor and second by Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, none, so, one that passes unanimously. So we went from three point zero five, is that right, Chuck?
Yes.
Decrease on the residential to three point one six?
Yes, but I, we can't do these other pages because I have to go through here.
You got a justice vote, we just did?
Yes, yeah, we have to go through and do taxes, I gotta do constitutional taxes, I have to go through and recount through all these pages, not complaining, I'm just saying I can't do it here.
Right.
It's all computerized.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, so do we have to another budget hearing?
Yes, we're gonna have to do, we should do it Monday.
Before the business, before the work session.
Yes, and there's gonna, we're gonna have to open up some more pages, like, uh, page, uh, two is gonna have to be reopened, redone, okay? So I'll, I'll get all that and I'll try to send it off to you tomorrow, like, before the.
All right, so should we do it five fifteen or five thirty?
You can do it at five fifteen, I don't know if that's possible for everyone to make it, I think there's a lot of stuff to be done. If you close one from the other, so I guess if you did it at five thirty, I mean, this means the six o'clock will start a little bit later.
Well, we'll take a, at the end of the meeting, I'll take a hand or two, and you do it.
Don't worry, I can be here five fifteen or five thirty.
Be here five o'clock.
So.
Anybody have a problem with five fifteen?
I don't.
Monday?
Should be fine.
So we'll put it five fifteen.
Also, we should call a public hearing.
Yes. Yeah, done.
Haven't you done that?
Right now, there's a public hearing scheduled for, for Wednesday, question came up today, depending on what you guys do on Monday, that may affect, um, the outcome of whatever minutes and agenda we're expected to come out Monday night. Generally, minutes are supposed to be posted five days prior to public hearing, um, however, my understanding, since on the, it's like the agenda, so the content hasn't changed, it's okay to have it five days later, so the short answer is, right now, you're scheduled for a public hearing on Wednesday. I don't know if that is actually gonna happen or if it's gonna be pushed the following week, we'll talk to Ken about it tomorrow, the change that she just made tonight may affect the numbers come Monday. So, right now, because those calculations haven't been done yet, I'm not sure whether or not the form and content is gonna stay the same.
Okay.
So I don't know what was the answer to that question, and no one asked it.
Okay, so I guess it's a public hearing on the, so that would mean it's on the amended budget, not the proposed budget?
Yes.
It's gonna be on the amended budget.
Yes.
And, all right, and we're not gonna amend it till Monday. If we, if we had done it today, then it would be okay for it.
Correct.
We can't do it today, so, all right.
What if we?
What's the last day of the, when do we have to approve it?
If it's pushed until the following Wednesday, it's summer thirteen.
Yeah, till the end of October, so even if you had to do it at the next business meeting.
What if we still had our scheduled budget hearing tomorrow? I mean, that was the original schedule?
Yeah.
Would that fix that problem?
Yes.
Should we do that? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, I can't make it tomorrow now, we can't make it.
So Monday, the reason that we changed, I can't remember exactly what it was, because of working with, I think, Justin, trying to figure things out.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
There wasn't, there wasn't. That's right.
If Tom can't make it, I'm trying. Let's do it Monday, we got all, all of the month to do it, we can have a public hearing and vote on it the following business week.
Right, well, the, the only problem there would be is that if, if it doesn't work out on, on Wednesday to have a public hearing, then you have to have a public hearing at the same meeting that you vote on the budget, which I don't think is necessarily good practice.
It isn't, but if everyone agrees to the budget and there's no, uh, there's no one speaking against it, then as a rule, you can.
Sure, I agree with that, but what, what if people just be against it, what if there's a valid point, what if there's something that we want to change?
Then we have, then we'll have to have a special meeting.
Then you can have a special meeting, if that's a.
Could you open the, the public meeting on Wednesday and then leave it open until?
Could you open the, the public meeting on Wednesday and then leave it open until, until the next meeting? So, you kinda had two meetings of, of public hearings on it?
Well, the whole issue of public hearing is whether or not the public has adequate notice as to the amended budget, right? Which is why the requirement for minutes, I think, beforehand was set. So, you could open it, but technically, that public hearing is invalid until five days have passed, presuming that that's the rule that Ken's going to say. But that said, we have done public hearings and vote at the same time. I definitely hear that point that it's not ideal, um, and that in that case, the way to compromise on that would be to have a special meeting following the public hearing, maybe two weeks later, so that you can incorporate the public's perspective into that, I'm not sure anyone would have objection to it.
That sounds reasonable.
Seems, yeah.
But I'll have Ken say.
I know we have, but I'm, I'm almost really like.
If you had a public hearing next, next weekend, Wednesday, the following week sometime, and.
You've, you've still got time. You guys are well ahead enough, Chris, to do your job, setting the schedule. And I may be making a mountain of it, although it may be a non-issue, but I just wanted to.
No more.
No mountains.
Oh, come on.
So, one more time, Chuck, is a three point five, three point one six decrease for residential, what's the commercial change?
It's three point one six for residential, point three nine for commercial.
What was the commercial before?
Commercial was point two seven nine. What do we cut from contingency exactly? Thirty-eight thousand two hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, so there's nothing more we can do today?
No, anything else is dependent on getting all this stuff. Put the big one, put green in the button, so it's an institutional mention, no, no, wait, it makes my life easier to state.
Let me just, let me just clarify before we all. So, um, is, they did not approve page forty-six or page seven, they just approved the amendments to them?
Page forty-six, they should have approved.
Okay, so, um, we hear that.
So, you can approve that as amended?
Yeah.
Or are you? You can just jump.
And they use seven also?
No, it's in that forty-six.
No, okay.
So, I'm gonna motion to approve page forty-six as amended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed, see none, passes?
Thank you. That's it, she says.
Now, as a whole, without, I'm not so, if you guys like doing this way, we've done it like multiple nights in a row, for short periods of time, rather than, with, Danny, you were here, but sometimes you'd be here for four or five hours.
Yes, if you want my thing, which I value very highly. I'll tell you that I've been there, I've been there to ten, eleven o'clock, where we've had dinners coming in, taking breaks to eat, and going, it was horrendous, because you zone out after a while. This, to me, has shown that where everyone stays interested, it's easier in the department heads, it's easier in everyone else, and a few more nights, but we're out of here in an hour, hour and a half, maybe two of the, so.
I think the.
Going forward, I think this is a great way to do it, it's up to the next council to.
I think the department head's liked it, I think Laura and I probably look a little bit tired.
But we're still not here till ten or eleven, we're, we're out by seven.
Yeah, what was the logic behind doing it in one marathon session?
Trying to get everybody here.
Okay.
To get, yeah.
Making sure.
The whole council is like lock off.
But it wasn't one very time, it was multiple, it was, uh, instead of two weeks, we'd do it a week or five days, and it was, uh, it was rough.
You probably drag it on over three weeks, but you do like one or two nights for multiple hours. Depends on the year.
I thought this was good.
Good, thank you very much.
What's your adjournment?
Where are you going?